Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, January fourteenth, our first meeting of two thousand twenty-five. In compliance with state law, city councils' special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we're calling this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Harsock.
Here.
Councilmember Herjehhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Wagner.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, and just to let everybody know, uh, Councilmember Simomo just stepped out. Oh, here he is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. Next is approval of agenda. I know it's the first meeting of the year, but I'm going to make an amendment for the agenda, and we're going to add a public proclamation after the public communication. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
What are you talking about?
Why?
I have the right to amend the agenda.
Can I look at the proclamation?
Given, given the lengthy, uh, time of our meeting tonight, I, I feel like we might need to postpone any additional agenda amendments until the next meeting.
I'm going to overrule that.
Okay, again.
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any? All those in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the agenda has been approved, six to one.
I like how we flustered Jeff with that one there.
Yeah, I know. Take five weeks off, and I don't remember how to do it. Next up is public communication. We have Michelle Allison here from the King County Metro. She's our general manager, and welcome, Michelle, and she's joining us virtually.
Michelle and Genevieve are being promoted to panelists.
Thank you, Krista.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm delighted to be here in the beginning of a new year. So I was here last year and gave a quick overview of Metro and where we were and some service investments in the city, and I'll be doing the same here again today. So thank you again for having me and letting me be remote here. But I do want to start off by acknowledging that, as you may have seen in the news, Metro did lose one of our operators recently. Operator Sean Yim was slain while operating Route seventy on December eighteenth. And as you all know, as public servants yourself, that public safety is always our first priority, no matter what seat we're in, certainly is for ours at Metro. And we've taken some steps this year, but we obviously know there's much more to do, and we're committed to doing more in partnership with our jurisdictions and with our labor partners and as a system as a whole to really center safety and the experience of our riders and our operators. I've spoken before the King County Council, and I'll be speaking again tomorrow, so some of you will hear me again at the Regional Transit Committee about Sean and the action, that actions that we're taking and that we will continue to take in the coming days and months. So now I'll pivot, and my colleague Genevieve is going to manage some slides for our conversation today, but please interrupt me if you have any questions as we go, or I can take them in the end. So when I was here last in August of two thousand twenty-three, so much has gone on since then, we covered a little bit on the ridership of the one sixty-eight, some of Metro Connects, which is our long-range vision and plans for Covington service, a little bit of our system-wide ridership, trip delivery, and the fall service change, as well as what we were doing from a workforce perspective. And I'm really proud to report that Service and Workforce Initiative is steering us in the right direction. We had talked last time about some real significant workforce shortages that were leading to service disruptions, and so we'll be providing an update on that today as it relates to service performance in Covington, future service planned, and notes about our performance system-wide, which is very exciting. And then, of course, I will leave plenty of room for questions for me. Metro service in the city of Covington is comprised of the one sixty-eight. This is not new to any of you. This connects Covington to regional network at the Kent Station, runs from four AM to one AM on weekdays and five AM to twelve AM on weekends. It's thirty-minute service, all week, and hourly service at night after midnight. The city is also served by the one sixty-two. This originates at Lake Meridian Park and Ride, just outside of the city limits, but we wanted to mention it because it's a nine-minute drive from the city of Covington City Center, and at a peak only, it is a one-seat ride to downtown Seattle, which we know is important to your residents. We also have six van pool groups that originate in Covington and more in the surrounding area. We didn't cover van pool in two thousand twenty-three, but we wanted to add it here because it's one of our flexible services that Metro offers to really help commuters get to and from work, especially in rural areas, a van pool can be really helpful to bring people to a central location but still have the flexibility of people's schedules, and it helps save on commuting costs. Metro provides all of the costs for the vans, so gas, tolls, insurance, maintenance, and roadside assistance. What we ask is that the public form a group of five with two or more volunteer drivers and a bookkeeper who will just monitor origin and destination and work schedule information for us so we can track its usage. The fare varies, varies on the size, but can sometimes be covered by your employer. Employers often have incentives to get folks out of their cars, and the van pool is one of those incentives. Another reason I'm flagging is because we currently have a promotion until the end of June. For people making twenty-five hours, dollars an hour or less, you can join for forty-nine dollars a month, which is a great promotion. So please, if you are interested or you want to plug it for a friend, join our, visit our website, and there's a bunch of information there, or give us a call, send me a note if you would like more information, and we can also put a link in the chat for you to take away. So shifting gears a little bit to spend some time on the Route one sixty-eight, it's doing really well. In November of two thousand twenty-four, it had an average of fifteen hundred sixty-five riders, boardings, riders. And the last time I was before you, we had talked a little bit about possibility of suspensions, and I'm glad to report that there's no planned suspensions in effect for the one sixty-eight. And as you can see from the information provided, the route has exceeded pre-pandemic ridership, and so, but we are not seeing crowding on the bus. This tells us a couple of things. One, it's saying that people are using the system, they found the one sixty-eight again, and there's more room still on the one sixty-eight to accommodate more riders. Similarly, the one sixty-two is also doing well. It has less ridership, it has about three hundred average weekday boardings in November, and we are not seeing crowding on the one sixty-two as well. There's often a lot of conversation, especially at the Regional Transit Committee, about future service changes and how those decisions get made and where the prioritization lies for those. So I'm going to spend a minute talking through our service investment. And these changes are really driven by policy. Service investments are developed by Metro, the Regional Transit Committee, and the King County Council. And what these do is provide transparency and agreement on the investments for the region as a whole so cities can understand how their plans match our service profiles. And there's three key policies that guide our decisions. The first is the service guidelines, which provides objective, transparent alignment with the King County overall goals for transit. The strategic plan, which establishes ten goals that articulate Metro's mission, uh, mission and vision, excuse me. And then finally, Metro Connects, which is Metro's unfunded, long-range service and capital vision for the next thirty years. So this really is that vision of where we want to be and the service we want to provide for the whole region. And again, it is that vision, it is unfunded, so currently we're going step by step to that plan as we have resources, but that is our guiding document in addition with the service guidelines and the strategic plan. The long-term plan for service in Covington. Metro has a couple of different, uh, proposals here for future service in Covington. It comes in two parts. First, there's two routes proposed for Covington for the interim two thousand thirty-nine network. This may sound far out, but for us in a planning world, this feels like it might come sooner than we think. So for the, within the next ten to fifteen years, uh, we have a couple of different options for your jurisdiction. The Route fifteen fourteen would extend the current Route one sixty-eight to Burien, and it would upgrade it to a frequent route, which in our world means that would come every fifteen minutes. The second route investment would be Route thirty-six-two, and this would serve as a local route connecting Black Diamond to Kent. And then, in the longer term, the two thousand fifty network proposes an express route, twenty-twenty would be that number, traveling from Auburn, upstate Route eighteen through Covington and to Snoqualmie, and we know that's a very important corridor for your residents. But I want to be clear, we are in a resource-constrained environment. So while this is the vision and the hope, we are going to need some additional resource, both in workforce and in funding, and able to meet the objectives outlined in our strategic plan. So for short-term service change that could impact Covington, uh, let's see. Here would be the next ten to fifteen years, so think in that timeframe. Metro makes changes to our network twice a year to make sure we're readjusting our service where we see ridership so that we're meeting some demand. And what you see on the slide are the priorities outlined in the service guideline that help us prioritize those service investments as we have resource to do so. So for example, if we saw significant crowding on the one sixty-eight or the one sixty-two, we would want to invest in those routes because they score higher. For a service investment, we would want to give them additional service to provide that extra capacity. But as I noted earlier, we are not seeing that crowding just yet, but it is something that we carefully monitor, and we do see more folks coming back onto our system as a whole, which is a wonderful trend. And I do want to note that as we were here last time, we talked about just the challenge that Metro had in recovering from COVID. The pandemic, uh, had lasting impacts on our workforce and our service, and we had developed a plan for recovering the hours that were suspended as a result of COVID. This plan was approved by the King County Council, and it reinvests suspended service hours in the same geographic area through restructures like the Linwood Link Project that we just finished, or the South Lake Connections that restructure service around the Federal Way Link Extension for Sound Transit, because we really want to maximize that capital investment. So Metro is continuing to grow service back and bringing back new service, uh, or service that matches the new travel patterns that people have. We had a really great example of that this fall when we reinvested about a hundred and fifty thousand hours in accordance with light rail opening, and we have seen some really good utilization from riders. So as I close, because I want to get to any of your questions, I want to share sort of the state of where Metro is as a whole. We were super laser-focused on our Service and Workforce Initiative, and it's been incredibly successful. The fall of two thousand twenty-four was our biggest service change because of this laser focus, and we were recognized by the American Public Transit Association. In December, they noted the urban transit systems that had the largest ridership increase in two thousand twenty-four, and Metro came in second. Let me tell you, I'm competitive enough to be bothered by that second. I'm also super proud of the organization to come in second, and we'll continue to try to beat that. Uh, and we saw fourteen percent increase in ridership in that timeframe. And when you drill down, you can see the times of day in the routes where that ridership was even more pronounced. These gains were only possible because we focused on our workforce, and we were able to bring in more operators and vehicle maintenance workers, and our teams have done such an excellent job of changing the way we recruit and training operators and mechanics. We are now doing one-day hiring events, um, a lot more very, a lot more updated training so people are more successful in their classes. And we're going to continue to do that as we move through the next year because we have more service to invest, and you all want more service from us. And we are doing that under a very deliberate, deliberate frame of safe, clean, and reliable. We know that that is the winning formula for transit systems if they want to continue to grow both their service profile and their ridership. You focus on safety, both for your operators and your riders. Bundleness is a close cousin to that, and then the reliability, which we know the city of Covington is also eager to receive in your city as well. I will stop there and see if there's any questions for me.
Does council have any questions? Debbie.
Michelle, thank you for your update. I'm on the skateboard, so I work with Genevieve, and, um, the question has come up quite frequently about the Highway eighteen route. So you mentioned that that would be, um, coming in fifteen to twenty-five years. Do you, I have got two questions. Do you have any data that shows how much ridership would take place on that route? Because we believe it would be a high demand. And then, secondly, why has it moved out so far and not, I mean, even in the more near term of ten to fifteen years is too long, in my opinion, but, um, first of all, data, do you, do you know how many people would be riding that if it were there?
That's always such a great one. Thank you for being a participant on the skateboard. That's a really important place for good local conversation. It's always hard to project sort of the chicken and the egg. If you invest, will they use it if, or should you invest where there's already a lot of people? So we play a delicate balance as service planners, trying to invest where there is going to be future investment. And this corridor that you mentioned does have some future potential, uh, investment in it that could garner some growth. I have not seen specific data for ridership projections for that, and we can take that question back to the team. But there are, um, there's a lot of competition in the region for our resource. There are spots of growth and development across the county that we need to balance with our current available resource, as well as light rail coming online and where that's going and how they need us to restructure our network to meet that investment that's coming into those neighborhoods. So the balancing act of time is also very real to the balancing act of our resource and what should come first. If we had more money and a larger organization, we could probably get to some of these things faster, but right now we are constrained by both our workforce, light rails plans, and jurisdictions and their own development patterns, and figuring out how to prioritize that based on ridership projections. But let me take that specific question about data back to the team.
Okay, thank you. So that probably answers the second question about why it's pushed out so far.
Yep.
I'm not aware of any specific data either, but I do know that, um, the Snoqualmie Casino, who employs a fair amount of people, um, that live out this way, um, uses a local church's parking lot to, as a park-and-ride, and they have their own, um, shuttle bus that drives their employees, I believe, three shifts a day, back and forth, back and forth, because their employees are too frightened to drive it. And I think right there, I mean, just at, at that one employer, you've got, uh, high, high number of writers. And then, um, you know, if you look at Microsoft and all the, the big companies on, on the east side, um, and more and more people are moving out, uh, this way. So I sure hope we don't have to wait fifteen years to see.
I get it. I totally understand. I appreciate, I appreciate that comment, too. And we can have our employee program connect as well. There could be some specific elements related to the employee, um, supports that we can provide. And what we also do is play, pay careful attention to your plans. You all work really hard on your plans, um, for growth and for development in your region, and when those are approved, they become part of a guiding document for us as well. So as there's more certainty about growth and ridership potential in your cities, it does change the balance of where you come, but it is also a really challenging, um, demographic. The city of Covington is sort of nested in a hard area to serve with public transit because of the length of those trips and the density population, uh, the density nodes are just sort of far away from each other. So, uh, it is, it is a tricky spot to serve well, but we do appreciate that you all want, want service, and we want to find a way to give that to you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I, uh, Michelle, thank you very much for bringing this forward. Thank you for bringing the information about Route three zero six-two, I believe is what it was. It runs out to Black Diamond.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with Debbie that ten to fifteen years, but that will probably be coming on sooner because Lake Point will be opening seventeen hundred housing units over the next five years. Um, and a normal housing unit is, I don't know, two and a half people, it's three people. But running it out by Kent Lake High School, because we have a lot of high school students that would love to use the bus, and then with ten trails having close to ten thousand homes being built over the next five years, plus Lawton Hills with another five thousand homes in Black Diamond, that is going to bring up the ridership a lot, and that would save on having to build, Sound Transit having to build more parking, so maybe they can, instead of paying for more parking structures, they could pay for another route from Metro.
That's an interesting idea.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, but I'm glad to see that it's on your radar to get a route for out there, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? No? Michelle, thank you, and Genevieve, thank you both for being here tonight. We really appreciate the update and look forward to partnering with you into the future to help, uh, build up ridership.
Thank you so much. It's always a pleasure, and I really appreciate your support for Metro Transit. Have a great new year.
You do. Thank you. All right. Uh, if council could please join me in front of the dais. Uh, council, thank you for allowing me to make this change to the agenda without that. But for everybody, change is inevitable. We all go through change in our lives, in our businesses, even everywhere we go, whether it's something that we want to embrace, something that we, some people don't like change, don't want to be involved in it. But little over ten years ago, we as a city had to make change. And we were honored through a process. Have a very good individual applaud be a part of this city. And we had an interview process that, um, was remarkable because one individual really stood out. There were three very good candidates, but one individual really stood out. When he met with us, we had dinner with the three candidates, and then we did interview. And this one individual came in with a work plan of what he felt was going well with the city, but what he felt he could improve on. And he did that, not pushing, but as to help even back then Covington grew, which happens to be our new tagline going toward greatness. But this individual, um, not only started on that foundation of what he wanted to see if he was chosen, and, um, he's built on that. He built a very good foundation, and we continue to grow and grow because that foundation was built strong. And so, uh, I'd like to ask Regan, Jim up front. We tried to keep this as a surprise.
It's very hard to surprise me. There it is. There it is. Am I wrong?
I know. So, yeah. Yeah. But, um.
This is where we're going to talk about it at summit.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I'm going to ignore that. But, um, so I had a conversation with a former mayor also. She sends her regard, Margaret. She can't be here because she's on a, um, sabbatical at her hometown Seaside, which, but she, um, wanted me to share that she remembers the phone call she made that you and, uh, nor, that her and Noreen made to you. You guys were still at the airport at, uh, CTAC waiting because you were, uh, not you, Aaron was expecting. And so you were ready to fly out if you needed to right away, and she said that that, um, conversation, she felt was emotional on both sides. It was, and, uh, she felt it was probably one of the best decisions and best conversations that she's given. So, the, uh, when we went through the interview process, we had, and Jim went through that interview process with us, we had sheets in front of us to write notes like we do during our commission. And several of us had nothing on that after, while talking with you, because you answered everything before we could ask it. So that was, that's a sign of a very good city manager. It has been a honor and a privilege to work with you these ten years. And the partnership that you've built, not only with every council member, every resident, every business here in Covington, but also, um, within the county. You work so well with other council members, other, um, city managers. You work well with the state, all of our representatives, and even nationally. You know more about what's happening before. And I normally hear a lot, I'll reach out, Regan, do you know that? Oh, yeah, I'm just getting ready to write, send it out to everybody. So it's, I'm so glad. So we have a proclamation, and I want to thank Krista for helping get this done. So whereas, because I can't write this, so whereas Regan Bulleye has played an essential role in shaping and implementing our new mission, mission, mission and goals for Covington during this decade-long tenure as a city manager. And whereas Regan is a devoted ambassador for Covington who champions the needs of residents and tires tirelessly advocates for the safety, well-being, and progress of his people, businesses, and natural environment. And whereas through fiscal responsibility, Regan ensures that we meet, pardon me, the growing needs of our city by adopting a conservative budget each year and strengthening our reserves to support future projects. And whereas Regan has fostered a positive and innovative culture amongst staff by building strong relationships and recognizing the value each individual brings to the city so that employees take pride in their work for the city of Covington. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five to be Regan Bulleye. In the city of Covington, and we ask all citizens, citizens to join us in this special observance and recognition of his contributions to the community. So we'd like to present this proclamation to you. But before I ask if you have anything you'd like to say, behind every strong leader is a very dedicated, significant other that helps make it happen. And I'd like to ask Aaron, do you want this up here?
Uh, yeah, I'll say a couple of words. So, um, yeah, we'll make, we'll make some.
We have these flowers for Aaron, a sign of thank you as well.
So we had, um, we had a couple of offers at the time that we, we got the Covington offer. And so we had some options, um, but those other options just didn't matter, quite frankly. It just felt right. It felt right, uh, walking in, meeting this council. It felt right meeting Sharon, Jim I was questionable about. But, but it really didn't feel right. I, I remember, this is kind of funny, but I remember in between some of the interview process, Sharon brought me back and sat me in my current office. Uh, this could work. I could make this work. This will be all right. Uh, so, yeah, it just, it just felt right. We, we prayed about the options we had, and it was absolutely, this is the place that we need to be. So that's why we, we set root here, uh, because it felt right. And, and that's, I think, a really good way to lead our lives when we need to make, make decisions. Uh, I will say, after I was hired and found out that my executive assistant's husband was on the council, uh, I was a little concerned about that. Talked and thought, I'm going to watch what I say around the office. I'm going to talk bad about, don't talk bad about Jim Scott. It might get back to, but I told Sharon, I said, now your allegiance to me is stronger than your Jim. I don't know if that, if that was the case. Anyway, I.
Really was.
Covington, and the people here know this, but Covington truly is exceptional. Uh, and, and you see it in how the Sharon's a good example of this, and, and the council members. Now, this was a really different council when, when I first interviewed, but, but we just keep filling seats with exceptional people, and, and Sharon was the heart and soul of this organization, and we haven't skipped a beat with, with Krista, right? We just, we just keep. We just, we just keep attracting the right people to do the right job to continue us being a high-performing organization. And I think that's because goodness attracts goodness and, and that's who we are. And so I just appreciate this. I am eternally grateful. Truly, words escape me to be here. We, we feel it a blessing. I, when I was first hired, I never thought I'd be here in a decade. That thought never crossed my mind. Uh, that is, that is, we've been recruited and, um, actually visited some other cities years ago, uh, probably about five or six years ago, we're like, no, like, we're in. Like, we're, we're staying here. And so, uh, yeah, we, we just love it. We, I love each of you tremendously. And we just got an amazing organization. So thank you for this. Uh, this just means we have a really amazing team and, and we all work really well together. So thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a hug.
Oh yeah, you wanted to be in the picture as well.
Hold on, hold on, pick one more.
One more thing. Thank you for all you are and all you do and so good for the council as well.
Can I open it now? I'll, uh, I'll save that one for later on.
You can read the rest inside later.
You always do it. Well, first you do what Aaron says.
Oh yeah.
Five million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred eight minutes. I'll tell you what, I feel younger today than I did ten years ago.
But you had to put up that many minutes.
Yeah, that hasn't been easy. I guess I'm telling you, you can talk about Jeff. No, I love you guys. Yeah. Oh, oh, do you want me to?
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna do a fifteen-minute reception and we'll come back at seven fifty. Great city managers, ten years. So with that, let's move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. And please notice campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at city hall or during council meetings, including public comment, is prohibited by state law. With that, um, do we have anybody wishing to address council this evening here? And welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so thank you, Mayor Wagner. Uh, so I just, I know most of you fairly well, um, but just wanted to, uh, let you know. I'll be taking over for Chief Penwell. Uh, Chief Penwell, we had to reshuffle the deck and he's gonna be going over to the city of Toquilla. Um, and I was lucky enough, and I mean that sincerely, to, uh, to get the Covington City Council. So I will be your liaison for, uh, the Puget Sound RFA. Uh, so if there is anything that you need, um, please let me know. Uh, for those of you who don't know me a little bit about myself, um, I was telling Mayor Wagner, this is, uh, just entering my thirtieth year in, uh, in public service. Uh, I had the, uh, the fortune of, I started out with King County Medic One, uh, so I was a paramedic, uh, and then in twenty seventeen, uh, had the privilege to take over as the fire chief, uh, for the Maple Valley Fire Department, and then we merged into the RFA. Um, I currently am the deputy chief over community risk reduction, so I oversee our FD cares program, our community relations program, our fire, uh, fire prevention program, fire investigation program, emergency management program, and our emergency medical services program. So that among, that among a few other things. Um, so I just, uh, again, wanted to, uh, let you know that again, Chief Penwell is, uh, is gonna be up in Toquilla and I'll be here. So I know most of you, if you need to get ahold of me, I know Krista and, and Sean both have my, uh, contact information as well as Regan. Um, and I wanted to add, uh, so Chief Carson and I actually met with Regan last week and had coffee. And as we were leaving true statement, um, uh, Chief Carson looked at him and goes, I, I don't know how we get so lucky. Um, and specifically speaking about Regan, uh, is that, uh, you know, all of the cities that we have, we have some, we have some great partnerships. Um, but you know, Chief Carson was quick to point out, he really appreciated the partnership that he, that he's had with Regan over the years and, and the relationships that we have here with the, with the Covington city. Uh, because that's really, at the end of the day, th- this all comes down to relationships and the people that you know. And Chief Carson has never had to call the city manager, uh, you know, Brian calls Regan and they have these discussions. Um, and so just tip of the hat to you, Regan, I, I just, and, and just to reinforce everything that was set up here, um, we really value the, the friendship and the relationships that we have here and, and Regan's a big part of that. So, um, but like I said, if you need anything from the RFA, I'll be your liaison and please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. Is there anybody else wishing to address council? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our council meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C two. Counsel, uh, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next is new business item number one, the SR five sixteen. Update and discussion and recommended and preferred elements for advancing. And Delaney is online. Welcome, Delaney. You are on mute.
Sorry about that. Thank you guys for having me.
Thank you for being here.
Happy freaking Bulleye Day. It is an incredible day. That was an awesome moment and we are excited to be here to give you guys an update on the SR five sixteen pedestrian bridge project. And so part of this update is showing you guys what the design of our proposed, our proposed design for this project is going to be moving forward. So we do have Matt Baumann from COE, who is our consultant on the project. And he is going to give some more information on how we came to this design and what it exactly looks like. And we are looking for city council feedback on this design. So if you do have questions, please do not hesitate to ask them because we would love for this to be a discussion as we come to an agreement on how we see the design best for moving forward in this project. And with that, I will pass it over to Matt.
Welcome, Matt.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Delaney. Uh, a great intro. So get the presentation up here. All right. Uh, so as Delaney mentioned, uh, we're really here for a couple of purposes. One is to provide a summary of the work we've done to date. And that's kind of the first four, five bullets on the, on the slide here in our agenda. Uh, and then the other piece is to get confirmation on our path move forward. Uh, those are really the last three bullets here. So that's, uh, getting confirmation of the preferred site selection, the bridge type and the approach option, um, that we have recommended. Uh, so just a, a quick background on the design team. Uh, so, uh, working for Delaney here is, uh, Team COE. Uh, so I'm Matt Poffman, uh, I'm our uh, consultant project manager. Uh, I've got nineteen years of bridge experience, uh, the last twelve with COE in Seattle. Uh, I've had more than ten pedestrian bridge projects on my resume, uh, most recently the Totem Lake Connector, uh, up in my hometown of Kirkland. Uh, and also currently building, uh, a project out of San Ramon, California, an iron horse trail crossing, another really cool, uh, rails to trails project. Uh, underneath those, we've got MIG, Jew Engineers and One Alliance filling out our team. Uh, some of you might have met, uh, some of our folks from MIG, uh, including Sue Gardner at uh, some of our outreach events that we'll, uh, go over here in a bit. Uh, quick project, uh, refresher. Um, so I'm sure you're all aware that current downtown is very car-centric. Uh, five sixteen runs right, right through the heart of it. And there's a desire to, uh, make the city more dense and walkable, uh, in the downtown area. And so this project is, uh, driving a couple of things. Uh, one, safety for both pedestrians and, and cars. Uh, and also equity, uh, for all user types, um, not just cars. Uh, and then also to stimulate development and, uh, economic type activity in the downtown area. Uh, so I'll go over a few of the project studies that have been done to date. Um, the first thing we started with was a past planning document summary, uh, basically going through all the documents that the city, uh, provided to us on what had been done so far, um, what all the planning was for the area. Uh, so some of those documents included the, uh, downtown plan and zoning study, uh, the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, uh, including the current update, uh, that's going on. Uh, the downtown form base code, city municipal code, uh, and then also the Wash dot SR five sixteen coveted Covington targeted study, uh, which, uh, recommended, uh, five roundabouts, uh, coming into town. Uh, so from there, we then started looking at the roadway cross-section. Um, so not only what is it today, but what does the vision for the future? Uh, so there, that is touched on in some of the planning documents, um, included on the, on the screen here is, uh, from, from the, um, city municipal code. Uh, so that's currently the road is, it's got a hundred foot right away. Uh, there's between four and six lanes in each direction, including a landscape median sidewalks each side. Uh, this future section is, uh, is even bigger. Uh, so what's, uh, ultimately the, the team agreed with on the, uh, the city and consultant team was that we would consider a hundred and ten foot right of way through here and that the bridge would span that to allow this future build out. Ultimately, what that means, we'll touch on in the, uh, later part of the presentation is that the entirety of the bridge landings and approaches are outside of the current, uh, SR five sixteen right away. Uh, the next thing we got into was the bridge width. Uh, so we did some studies of bridges in the area, uh, looking at level of service, um, what is out there, what the pedestrian activity is today and what it could be in the future. Uh, ultimately, we pro, uh, recommended a, between a ten and twelve foot bridge width, uh, kind of depending on the approach type. So we also got into, uh, geotechnical stormwater, uh, stopping site distance and permitting memos, uh, again, setting the groundwork for the next phase of the project. Uh, and then the last little piece here that again, I'll touch on later is we looked at concept site layouts in the areas around the bridge landings. Uh, so we did our first round of outreach this spring. Uh, that happened uh, mostly virtually, but we also, uh, did a number of in-place, uh, in-person events. And there were three main things that, uh, this outreach was focused on. Uh, first was, uh, how folks travel to and within the area. Probably to no surprise, there was ninety percent of folks drive, uh, but more than fifty percent said they would be open to walking or rolling if improvements were made and they felt safe doing so in the area. Uh, the next thing that they were asked is where they see problems getting around. Uh, and that focused mainly on the responses we got were the four signalized intersections, uh, running through downtown. Uh, some of the comments that we got were long wait times, uh, disconnected sidewalks and a lack of separation from cars. And then the third thing they were asked is where crossing improvements were needed. Um, and that makes sense that it was mostly tied to that first question that people highlighted the four intersections, but interestingly enough, there were two mid-block cross-sections, uh, or two mid-block areas, uh, excuse me, that showed up. And so in this slide, you can see the darker red or where more people were saying that we want improvements there. And so that you can see those kind of two darker concentrations mid-block. Respondents were also asked, what is important in a pedestrian bridge? And I'll touch on this on, again, on the next section, uh, the, the responses we got were safety, accessibility and proximity to transit. Uh, so ultimately it was talking about, uh, prioritizing functionality for the bridge. So the next re- phase of outreach happened late summer, early fall. Uh, we really, we took what the design team had progressed in the design based on our own search, plus all the public feedback that we had gotten to date. Pushed the design a little bit further along and was seeking, uh, continued feedback on where we should continue moving forward. Uh, so there were three main items that we were talking, uh, seeking feedback on there. Those are the three main items that I'll be touching on next that we're, we're looking, uh, to, to get confirmation on moving forward. Uh, but in addition to those items, we continued to get other feedback, uh, that we solicited. And, uh, it was good to hear that that feedback kind of matched what we got in the first round. Uh, those included accessibility, uh, safety, uh, making sure we had comprehensive improvements and we weren't building a, a, a nice, safe crossing in an island, if you will. Uh, and that the city was considering maintenance and how they would own, maintain this, this facility moving forward. So on the three main topics that we were seeking, uh, feedback on, the first one is preferred site location. Uh, so the team started with, uh, this yellow box was our project study area. We were looking at developing, kind of developing a crossing anywhere within that zone. Uh, based on that initial feedback, we had boiled that down to the, the two blue areas. Uh, we had also considered some sites further west within the project study area, uh, but ultimately we couldn't find an area within there that would meet the project goals, um, due to a number of things, limited space available in the current configuration, uh, overhead utility lines, uh, and some other, uh, issues with, um, uh, future development and where, uh, the crossings were, uh, most anticipated to be. Uh, so from there, uh, the team proposed these three circles, uh, within those two blue areas and, uh, reached out to the, to public on, the question was how helpful a crossing would be in that location. And so the, the crossing on the left, number one, the westernmost one, uh, was by clear the favorite among all the respondents. And the one on the right, uh, number three was the least preferred of all the respondents. Uh, that worked out nicely because by all of our investigation from the design team, we'll circle here. The first one was the one that mess, best met all of the project criteria. And so ultimately that is the one that the project team is recommending that we move forward with. So I'm gonna pause here before I move on to the next step and see if there's any questions on this part of it.
Any questions so far?
Okay. So the next step was, uh, asking the, to get the public's feedback on the preferred bridge type. Uh, so this had been boiled down from the first set of feedback into, uh, four bridge types that the team had, had developed that were relatively simple, uh, yet attractive solutions. Uh, so to go in order, uh, kind of clockwise around here, the top left is a concrete box. Uh, this is a really sleek and streamlined solution. Uh, it'd also be, uh, have the lowest cost, uh, and maintenance requirements, uh, being a concrete bridge. Uh, the next one on the upper right is a steel tube truss. Uh, so this is, kind of gives a different, um, feel as you're walking through it. It's more enclosed. It's also a pretty simple solution, uh, yet a pretty unique form, uh, not often done, a, uh, this is called a beer and deal, a true beer and deal trust. Uh, the one on the bottom left is a, your, uh, a kind of iconic steel tide arch. Uh, so this is, uh, frequently used form, uh, very simple, um, but obviously very aesthetic. And then the one on the bottom right is, uh, kind of a custom shape that we come up with for this project. Uh, so it's, it's basically a tight arch, but we dropped the arch, uh, so it's kind of a half-through arch. Uh, so again, a pretty simple structure, but a very unique form, uh, one that's maybe not seen anywhere else. So again, we, from the evaluation from the design team, each of these is, uh, really very similar. There's not a big differentiator between them. Particularly the, the three steel options are all, um, very the same from almost all the evaluation, uh, criteria. And so this really boiled down to what would the public prefer? And the public, by and large, chose the steel tide arch. Uh, they had over fifty percent of the public preferred those, uh, from both perspectives, both the driving under perspective and the walking over. And the, by far, the least preferred was And the, by far, the least preferred was the concrete box in the upper left. Uh, so with that, the team is proposing, uh, that we move forward with the steel tide arch. So again, pause here and see if there's any questions on this part of it.
Any questions? Beth?
Yeah, I know there was, there was, um, a few concerns brought up in the comments and, uh, about, um, people being able to throw stuff over her and that, that onto the roadway and whatnot. And is there, is there, was there any talk of having any sort of, um, like a clear flexi or some guard or some sort of covering? I mean, I know we, people are going to be using it in the winter time. They probably prefer a little bit of shelter, because then you open up the can of worms and people hanging out up there all night. Any of that conversation that ties into?
Yes, it was. Uh, so that as far as being enclosed and having a, a covering, uh, that is, there's a two sides to that. Yes, it's, it's nice to have it, but, um, from a safety perspective, one of our, um, governing criteria is not a criteria, but a, uh, inspiration for the project, if you will, is, uh, SEPTED guidelines, uh, which is all about safety. Uh, and having an enclosed, uh, feature like that is not the route the design team preferred to go. Um, as far as the throwing objects, uh, over the side. Uh, so Wash Dot does have some guidance on that, uh, based on the current Wash Dot guidance. The proposal is to not have what you would call a throw fence on the structure. Um, so actually the, the bridge up in the city of Kirkland that we just completed also does not have a throw fence on it. Um, that is an option moving forward into the next phase of design that if beyond, you know, Wash Dot doesn't say you have to do one, but if the city says we would prefer to do one, that is, that is an option.
Google that and see what that would look like. I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with it. Is, is it, is it plexiglass along the sides just to keep people from falling off or throwing?
Uh, so
Probably large. I mean, it looks like anyone could.
So by default, the railing on the side of this would be four and a half feet tall. Um, so about this tall, it'd be enclosed mesh. Standards are that you can't fit more than a four inch sphere through it. So it's a we do something prettier than this, but you can imagine chain link that's four and a half feet tall.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Right?
Yep. Uh, so then the last, uh, item here was the preferred, uh, approach option. Uh, so quickly, uh, diving into this with one of the main criteria of the project being let's make this work with the current footprint, uh, with, uh, out there. The team came up with two options. One would be, uh, ramps. The other would be elevators, uh, with both options. We'd incorporate stairs in there so that there's multiple, uh, ways to get up there. Uh, and with these options, uh, each of them really has pros and cons relative to each other. So the approaches with ramps, uh, better meets our evaluation criteria for connectivity in the existing configuration. So how things fit today. Uh, compatibility with future development. Uh, to have lower operations and maintenance costs compared to having elevators. Uh, and it was the, by far, the clear public preference on these two. Uh, on the other hand, the elevators, uh, had better benefits when it comes, uh, to uh, lower property impacts. You can imagine the footprint is much smaller with this, with this option, uh, lower, uh, initial project, project cost. Uh, lower potential for utility impacts and constructability. Both of those are related to, again, the smaller footprint. Uh, so based on that, the design team, uh, recommended further items be considered. Uh, one of those be communication with the impacted property owners. Uh, so the city had reached out to all the property owners within all three sites, uh, had actually learned her back from one, uh, to date. Uh, also need to further consider property valuation for acquisition and temporary easement as again, all of these landings and approaches are entirely outside of the SR five sixteen right away. Uh, and then again, make sure that the city, uh, has a plan for management of the property and structures long term as you're taking in this new facility that you will, you will own and manage. Uh, so based on the criteria, really having both options had pros and cons relative to each other. Uh, the design team really left this to the city staff to, to make a recommendation. Uh, and ultimately the staff recommended the approach with ramps. Uh, they, in that they cited very clear public preference on that. Uh, the lesser ongoing maintenance costs and easier usability for, for all users of that type. Um, so with that, I will show a couple more slides, um, on this before I open it up a little further. This is a, um, rendering of, uh, the approach with ramps at the west, the preferred site, the west side. Uh, this is, uh, a rendering that was done, a very rough scale. This is actually done in with Google Earth where you can actually in Google Earth, you can pan and zoom and rotate and walk across the bridge, uh, pretty unique feature. It's got some downsides and things like you can't, if something exists in Google Earth, we can't turn it off. Like there's a bridge in the middle of one of the approaches. There's some cars buried under one of the approaches. Those are, um, just an, uh, note of fact to this. Um, so those are things we can develop a more refined model separate from Google Earth going forward, but this is very useful for seeing the site and being able to get a feel for it at this stage. Uh, what we've shown right now is closed ramps, uh, so this would have walls on the side and it's completely filled in. Um, there are different face, face treatments you could do on those walls, whether it be concrete or different linings or artwork on there. You could also do vegetated walls like we did up in, uh, the Totem Lake Connector project in Kirkland. There's also an option that you could do open ramps, uh, so more of an elevated structure. Uh, this opens things up. There's more uses that are available underneath the site. Uh, obviously that, that costs more though, uh, having more, more structure to, to build and maintain. Uh, so either way, the design team recognized the impacts here, uh, that are significant on the properties there. And so, uh, we would need to further look into conceptual site layouts, uh, but we've started with some to make sure that these are at least feasible solutions. Um, so again, I want to put a big disclaimer on here in the red text that these property owners have not uh, seen these sketches. Uh, these are more the design team has developed these to make sure that there is a possible solution, not that this is the solution. Um, so again, co- co- continued coordination with property owners and stakeholders would really have to, to go before we develop these solutions on how the, the spaces at each end would be, would be rearranged and what the final thing would, would end up looking like. So on the approach options, um, again, the city, uh, city team is recommending we move forward with the approach with ramps. So looking for confirmation or any questions.
Joe?
So I'm looking at this and I agree there might be stairs, but is the, the, if we're looking at the part on the right of our screen, uh, looks like a crosswalk, but is it stairs that lead to stairs or is that a crosswalk that leads to stairs?
Yeah, this might be easier to see if I come back here. So the intent is you would have a switchback ramp, um, that would come, see if I can get the it's not going to work on the screen. When you, when you get to the end of the bridge, um, you could either go down a little bit and come down the stairs.
Yeah, yeah.
Or you could walk all the way down, make a U-turn and come back down. At the end of that, where you make the U-turn, there's another set of stairs
Okay.
that you could go down, um, and we could add crosswalks there to connect to the businesses at the end of the ramp.
Okay.
Kind of creating multiple connection points.
Yeah, I just looked like, I couldn't tell if it was stairs or crosswalks and was looking at that and it was confusing me because I just was picturing these cars that are in this draw, in this picture, driving into more, driving into stairs. So I just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Sean?
Uh, thank you. This is, um, it's helpful to be able to actually see the visual visualization of what this would look like and, um, I also appreciated at the beginning, you mentioned the, um, Wash Dot's plans for the multiple roundabouts. Um, so uh, hopefully as we go forward with this, that we continue to think about what Wash Dot's considering and how that's going to be built and what it's going to look like and make sure that our, uh, if we go forward with a pedestrian bridge, that it aesthetically ties in as well. Um, so I could see there being some conflicts just from a, you know, like, like I said, aesthetic standpoint. So just want to make sure we're, we're connected there as best we can. Um, I do like the idea of, um, that those ramps, I actually was thinking, you know, you mentioned that they were closed or could be open, but I'm wondering if there's kind of a halfway between those where it's closed, but it's got space for the city to store things under there. Um, is that possible?
Yeah, maybe I can through a few slides in the backend of this. Um, so these are some examples from other projects. Uh, this would be each of the options here are really completely open.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the one on the lower left corner and
Hmm.
below it, next to it are pretty similar in that they've got switchback ramps.
Yeah.
So you can really see what that could look like. Uh, there is an alternative, yeah, where it could be mostly walls, but then you could create pockets. Um, and that's really where the, the door is open for all kinds of opportunities there that you could build in storage facilities. You could build in a permanent, um, food truck area. You could build in, there's all kinds of things, bike lockers that, that, that you could do in there. Uh, the options are really wide open as to what could be done there and those, those could be explored moving forward.
And along those same lines, sorry, just lastly, you know, with this slides really, it's great. Hopeful, you know, this will be one of the, uh, architecture elements that people start to associate with Covington, that we have the ability to brand the, um, uh, structure, you know, with, you know, city colors and, and our, um, uh, our name on there, but I'd also love to see, I know we talked to Wash Dot and was a big fight to get the ability to hang the banner. So if there's a way to have quick, easy, um, hanging a banner or even digital display, I think would be really, really cool up there. So I'm assuming that's, if we have the money, that's something that can be done for that too.
Yeah, certainly hanging a banner would not be an issue. Uh, we'd look to find a way to fit it within the structure. Um, yeah.
Beth?
Um, so just to be, just to be clear, like, these photos were shown at the communities that you, you engaged with such as affinity and Covington Place. Like, it looks like an awful lot of walking for somebody with, even if you have a, unless you have a motorized wheelchair. When I think about maybe the elderly folks that are looking for ways to get across and I don't know how often they'll use it. You know, it turns a safer, sure, but it looks like it could be a bit of a hike for some folks.
Yeah, so these, uh, images are from the boards that were at the public outreach.
Okay.
So the ones on the left showing those long switchback ramps that are what we're proposing, yes, that's
And they went, oh, oh, that looks like I could handle that. That was, okay, just making sure.
I think that was generally the feedback that we heard was that was preferred over the having to wait for an elevator and the safety concerns with the enclosed space with an elevator.
Sure. Thanks.
Debbie?
Thank you. And I had two, um, kind of thoughts around the same as, uh, council member Smith around the, uh, potential of the roundabouts coming in. Um, one is just the timing of we don't want to plan this too far down the pipe until we know whether we're going to get these roundabouts coming in. But then the second thought kind of converse to that is if we go with, if we were to get five roundabouts down five sixteen, that kind of takes our crosswalks away, right? I mean, think about where all of our crosswalks now are at intersections. Without those intersections, we've lost our crosswalks. And this becomes even more necessary. Um, that's just, that's not a question. That's a thought.
There are, but it'd be hard to get
Yeah, it would be, yeah, you'd have to wait. Yeah. Um, so I think for me, my initial thought, when I saw the slides ahead of the meeting was just in, uh, how do we factor the impact from the widening project and potential roundabouts coming in with putting this in, which comes first and, and which is most important to come first. But we, we don't really have any say in the timing of the Wash Dot project. But we do have a say in this one, so.
So the, the roundabout study, actually, the, the easternmost end of that limit is, uh, is it a hundred and sixty eighth with the, with the current roundabout? So that is the, the easternmost roundabout that's in there. So each of the project sites that we proposed and ultimately the site number one that's shown here is actually beyond the limits of that roundabout study.
Okay. All right, thank you. So it wouldn't matter. We could move along like that. Okay, thanks.
All right, so what, um, s- staff is asking is what our preference is for location? The approach and design, the type.
Yeah.
So um, we have what the public chose is number one, which is by, which would cross be by Applebee's and, um, Key Bank. The second one would be Walgreens and, um, I guess less Schwab. And then the third one is about where Chick-fil-A is crossing over to where um, BECU is. So I guess, let's go down site. Does counsel agree with putting it at the preferred site number one, which would be where uh, Key Bank is crossing over to where Applebee's is? Is there consensus for that? Yeah, okay, so that that's good with that. Then the approach. So looking at whether we go with ramps or elevator. Um, if we look at, can you go back to the, where it shows the location um, from up above on there for worse, the first approach for the first ish, um, looking up, down, how much space it would take. Well, that one even there. So looking at that
This one?
That one there.
Okay.
That takes up a lot of parking.
It does.
And right now, Key Bank and Chipotle fight for parking. And then across the street, the dentist and Jamba Juice fight for parking because there's very limited parking in those two areas. I know that preferred was saying ramps because it's less maintenance. Going with an elevator takes up less property space. The only problem with elevators is if the power goes out, then Peters Sound Regional Fire would be called to help get people out of the elevators. Um, so knowing the property, I, well, what does counsel prefer? Do they want to see the ramps or would they prefer elevators? Joe, you have your hand up?
Uh, I would prefer the ramps because I'd be wor- more not worried about the power being out in Peters Sound Regional Fire coming to assist people. I'd be more worried about the possibility of drug use, uh, other explicit activity being going on inside there. Cause we've all been to a park and ride at, I, for, uh, for Metro and no one wants to touch inside any of those elevators. And I'm sure chief doesn't want to be monitoring elevators all day long. So I prefer the ramps personally.
Okay, does counsel prefer ramps?
Magical solution for small ramps.
I, I have a problem with the ramps. I mean, I understand the ramps.
Yeah.
They're aesthetically look very good. I mean, the, the, the one that's in Kirkland, the bridges that were built for part of sound transit, especially where Microsoft is on five twenty. Those look amazing with the ramps and everything. I just have a problem with it taking up so much property when there isn't enough parking the way it is. Joe?
My question is, is if you, if you're going down James and over by East Hill Elementary, they had that elevated crosswalk for, since before I moved to Washington in nineteen, in the early nineties. Um, but, and I know that those ramps predate ADA, so there, there's probably they're probably not currently up to code since they're about forty years old. But is there not something similar we could do that would be s- close to that, that wouldn't take up as much space? Uh, as much as I think the ramps would be a great idea, but I agree with you, uh, with, with you, Jeff, that they take up so much space. And looking at all of the other options in here, if I can get this thing turned back on. I like the idea of, uh, ramp B with how they're kind of on the sides. But even that would take up way too much space and we'd be looking at probably having to tear down Key Bank and rebuild it.
Beth?
So I guess another, is there a way to kind of meet the middle? Cause like, I could buy leaning more towards the ramps because I, elevators are expensive to maintain and build and put in. But is there, could there be an opportunity that to create parking underneath ramp? Like, because I'm trying to figure out exactly how wide, because it looks like it's probably certainly what, six or seven feet wide each ramp? Is there an opportunity to, and then enclose it for storage? There's still a lot of parking spaces going away, but maybe we could.
Yeah, so to touch on a, on a few things there, um, so the, the ramps, we have steepened them up as much as ADA will allow. Um, so if you build this project, you will have to meet ADA requirements. Um, so it's, it's eight percent. It's actually not a smooth ramp. It's, it's eight percent and then there's a landing, eight percent, and then there's a landing. Uh, if we had done a smooth five percent, um, like a, like a multi-use trail, uh, would typically have it'd be even longer than what's currently shown up here. The path that's shown is twelve feet wide, uh, so we had recommended between ten and twelve feet. Um, the ten feet we had associated more with an elevator, uh, mostly because you're less likely to be riding a bike up there. If you, if there's an elevator at the ends, we said the wider twelve feet, if you have ramps because then it does accommodate bicycle riders a little bit better and that extra room gets a little bit more elbow room for, for uh, folks up there. So at twelve feet, yeah, if it was open underneath, having parking underneath or under other facilities would be something that um should be able to be accommodated. Not as much as what is currently out there, but it would be able to replace some of it. Uh, within the TSNL report, there was a, a preliminary study done on the number of impacted parking stalls. Also, that is within the TSNL report, again, based on concept site layouts that were developed that haven't been coordinated with stakeholders yet.
Christina. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna go backwards from where you started to my comment. Um assuming it's not gonna be I five and like bumper to bumper on the bikes. I do, I mean not only is it the grand mass of these ramps, I, I think we could get away with ten feet. Um, just that's just my opinion of these ramps. And then, okay, we've, we've established that number one is probably the best location if in a perfect world. Um, is there a better location that doesn't take up as much parking? It's still on, I mean, it's still in that home stretch. We had A to Z, right? And we, we, we centered right in the middle and that's really nice in a, in a perfect world. Um, if we chose two or three, would there be better, a better place for these ramps? And, and then I don't, I don't know about the I like the idea of having parking available underneath or for folks who want to park, but I have a feeling that Chief will have to be running. He, he'll have to patrol every morning and to clear this place for parking spots of people. Intense potentially. Um, like by day, great idea. By night, hmm. Not so sure. Um, is, is there a better option for mitigating the loss of parking?
Yeah, from the sites that we looked at with our criteria, uh, with the biggest driver being that we had a hundred and ten foot right of way that we were intending to span across. Um, each of the other two sites, uh, that we came up with had just as severe of parking impacts. So this is the middle site, uh, which is Walgreens on the north, Les Schwab on the south. Um, so you see, there's, there's two images shown here. One's got a elevator in the upper right corner. One's got the, the ramps on the lower left. So you can kind of see the difference in the in the footprint there. Uh, but there's similar issues with this site and then the east side. Uh, so this is again between um Starbucks and Panda Express on the north side and then, and the, uh, the larger uh, shopping mall on the, on the south side. Uh, so again, similar issues that that north side is really constrained, taking up parking spots right in, in between uh, drive-throughs. Uh, that south side is taking up a lot of parking lot space as well.
So in your report, it shows that the west side has the least amount of property impacts versus the other two. With the east side, like you just said, has the most property impacts.
Yes.
Um, is, is, this is the opinion of those who answered a poll, correct? Is there, is?
S- sorry, when you say the, which part is the opinion?
Um, the location of this bridge.
So it was twofold. One is the design team investigated impacts and costs and design features and then also got the public feedback.
Just wondering if we could even move it more west to see, you know, where there's less loss of parking, but I don't, it sounds like you've done your job. Thank you.
We, we did also look further west. Um, honestly, the first spot that we looked is where the BPA power lines are. Um, but with the overhead clearance requirements, that wasn't going to work. Uh, and then if you go farther west of there, we could not find spots, uh, that would work and those then in addition to fitting with today's site, had to fit with the roundabout, uh, the future roundabouts.
Joe.
Speaking of future sites, and I'm just, eh, we were saying how far west you went, but what about where, I'm talking maybe sixty yards away. Uh, right there in front of Chase Bank is this really weird, really terrible way to get in towards Chase Auto Zone Safeway. Um, I think the last time I used that particular way to get into Safeway, I was a senior in high school. Um, and that was twenty years ago and it would take that'd be one spot and then the parking lot and then the other side would be in between. Would be Applebee's and Planet Fitness.
You know, but you're still interfering with the, that's where the BPA power lines are.
Yeah, I think that entrance that you're describing is underneath the BPA power.
Yeah, yeah.
Make BPA.
So, okay. With, um, so I guess the next question then is, um
Right?
Is council still, well, let's, I'll just go from one to one. Do you prefer ramps? Knowing how much property it's gonna take? Or elevator, knowing that there is the issues that Joe brought up with the drug and stuff, which is a big problem.
Ramps still.
Debbie.
Ramps.
Sean.
Yeah, ramps.
Beth.
Hey, I'm good with the other one, but I'll stick.
Okay, Christina.
Only by hair ramps.
I have to say elevators because I, I, as a prop business owner in the past, that would just kill me. So I so, but.
I'm always saying it for accessibility. I don't know.
I'm saying it for safety, someone's gonna get right in there and call it out loud and make ones.
Even, even that, like the, the one at Angle Lake, I'm sure Chief, you probably have some horror stories from parking line at Angle Lake.
So I guess it's to go with uh, ramps, but trying to work with the property owners. I don't know where you're gonna, I don't know how you're gonna put it in there. That's just not gonna work over there by Applebee's. They don't have any parking the way it is.
This discussion is the, the same discussion we had with the design team and why ultimately the design team actually did not make a recommendation on this.
Yeah, cause from, from seven thirty AM until probably s- eight o'clock at night, that parking lot between Applebee's and T-Mobile and stuff, you can't get a spot. And so that would just wipe out those businesses and putting ramps there.
We can't do that.
Yeah.
So with that, hmm, is it likely that the property manager will never approve the release?
I don't know.
Right away.
Likely?
I think that this might be a new point because
Yeah.
Um.
Uh, Dawn, eh, Dawn?
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, council. I, I just wanted to, uh you guys were just kind of touching on it. Obviously, as we go through this, you know, feasibility wise, we still have to work through, um you know, addressing that and with the property owners and, and, and modifying design and um, coming up with uh, some solution. I, Mac, you can kind of show they're talking about adding a modif- an entrance um, right next to, uh the, um smoothie place or whatever, um
Jamba Juice.
Jamba Juice, you can see right there, there's an added entrance there to help with circulation, which was a little bit of, um, so you're taking, so it kind of changes the way the dynamic is working in there. So maybe people can get in and out. So some of it would be changing the way that, that circulation in that whole parking lot would be looked at too. Uh, I will agree with you guys. That's the very, these are the very comments that I've been saying that I'm struggling with greatly. The, of knowing those same things that you're referring to, Mayor. Um, i- in making that happen. And so maybe as we walk through this, you know, uh maybe we have to come back, I mean and change, I don't know. That's a little bit of this is where we're going, but it's like, okay, is this, this seems like it checks all the boxes as it sits right now. But a big hurdle is dealing with the property impacts and, and can you mitigate that? Um, and, and I don't know that we know that yet, um uh, but just trying to get an idea as far as you know, kind of preferences. I mean, it kind of, it's kind of pointing us to this direction. Even knowing that this is a big hurdle that we would have to get through and, and so I, I don't know that I could say, yeah, I think we can make this happen because I don't, I see challenges with that e- uh, as well, but I do know that uh, you know COE team and stuff like that has been looking through a lot of this and we've talked about yeah, we could make some modifications here or there and we could maybe get some creative pieces with maybe some of the parking, you know, under part of it and things like that, like that was mentioned. But those would be kind of things we'd have to walk through as we're, we're having some of those layouts and, and discussions with property owners.
Then let's move forward with, uh, preferred method, um, is a ramp. Um, and then letting your team and Dawn, your team and Delaney come up with the actual preferred method to bring back at a future date, so we can see what it looks like after you're able to talk with the property owners. Because it, after talking to property owners, they may be all on board with it, but you might have to change it a little bit to, to make it fit. So we'll leave that up to, to you, uh, to make this happen and then bring it back. So, then.
And maybe just like an analysis of parking spots lost versus how many can fit under it. That, I think that would be helpful for us.
Yeah. Okay, so then let's move into the, um what I call the fun part, design, what it's gonna look like, aesthetics. So you had, um, the preferred method you said was the arch steel tied?
Uh, yes, sir.
Or tiled, tied? Um, can you bring those options back up? Okay, the steel tied arch. Um what does council think? Are they good with that? You prefer a different one?
My, my one ask. And that, and that's just because we, we've all heard of people doing this is what are we doing for these that would prevent people from jumping off of them? Cause, cause the weird stupid TikTok trends.
Yeah.
And people suffering from mental health issues may want to try to jump off of this bridge. What are we doing to prevent that? And I, I think I need to know that before I can decide which one of these were to go with.
I think that question would probably be independent of the structure type. Um you probably, the likely answer to that is to put a throw fence on there if that is a significant concern that the city wants to move forward with. And I think you do that regardless of which one of these types was, was selected.
So, thumbs up of steel tied arch. Okay, I'm good with either one of the arches.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so steel tied arch. So I guess it's the preferred me- preferred location, number one there by Chipotle and Applebee's. Then leaving it up to you and Dawn, your team and everybody to come up with how the ramps are gonna work. And then moving forward with the steel tied arch. That worked?
Okay, yes.
Delaney, do you need anything else? I should ask, you need anything else?
No, that should be everything that we need.
Okay. So, thank you for this presentation. Or did you have anything else you wanted to add before it?
No, my last bit was, I was just gonna say thank you for this. Um it's not, I believe it or not, I've not worked on that many projects, uh, this close to my hometown. Um, so it's, it's nice to have a, another signature project here. I'm looking forward to it.
Great.
Well, thank you for all this information you've brought to us and in, I know in our packets, you've got the evaluation criteria for each site and how that works with the, I appreciate the it keeps sessioning out. It expires on me. Um so I appreciate where it goes from best to worst. And, um, I appreciate that because that really helps. So thank you.
Yeah.
So this, this very good presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Session expired.
I guess that means we need to just.
Does that mean the meeting's over? Um okay, next, uh agenda item number two, consider, well, we're not we will remove this item because we did not have the youth council interview. So agenda item number two is, um, we're postponing it till a future date. Move into agenda item number three, consider an appointment to the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Does council wish to take action tonight?
Mayor, I moved to appoint Janelle Johansson to the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Position number five with a term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Thank you, Beth. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Janelle Johansson to fill position number five. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think she, she hit the nail on the head to me in her first answer about, um, what equity and inclusion means. And that it's about trying to lift every, all the different communities. It's not just about giving everybody the same thing, but about finding out what, what other people need to help raise them to the same level. So, um, and you know, she has a lot of experience in her day job with um, looking at finding out what people's needs are and she's needed this community, but she, she seems to have a really good um process and method for how she would engage with community, with her new community and neighbors. And figuring out what people feel they need to make this an inclusive community. And, um looking at things from an equitable lens and don't leave anyone behind.
Great. Thank you, Beth. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Um, thank you. Uh, just pretty much what Beth said. Um, she was also very much about communicating and, um, inviting um, others to provide their perspective. Um, that's important and needing dialogue at the spaces where they're at, whether it be an event or whatnot, but not just throwing stuff out via social media. Um, but inviting people to, to talk about, um, what's important to them, so.
Great, thank you, Debbie. Anybody else that wish to speak for or against the motion? Right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Janelle Johansson to fill position number five on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you and congratulations, Janelle. Next up is new business item number four, consider a resolution adopting the new city manager merit goals form. Noreen, welcome. It's been a while since we've seen you.
Thank you. Yeah, your grace tonight for sure.
Yes. We are.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And this item is about um, significantly expanding the city manager's merit goals. Her, the city manager's recommendation um, from three annual merit goals that the rest of eligible staff normally has to all of the summit action items. Um, and on the example sheet that I gave um, for the new form, those were actually all the summit action items from, um, twenty twenty four. So you can see those were twelve action items. So it's a significant expansion. However, I don't think it will change things too much for the city manager because he already uh, monitors all those and works toward those twelve uh, summit action items. So instead of the council having to debate which three of, um you suppose of six that, or five or six that are recommended, we just take the whole batch. And, uh, you know, monitor those and the rating system kind of mimics what we do for the three merit goals. Um, the award is still the same, thirty-two merit hours and try to proportion it among um, acceptable achievement uh, of how many goals he reaches for acceptable achievement. So what remains essentially the same. So what remains essentially the same overall, except now you'll be looking at um. You know, measuring or accepting uh the progress on twelve action items instead of three. So does anybody have any questions in this regard?
Anybody have any question? I'm trying to get this thing to work. Jennifer.
Yes, thank you, Noreen, um. I don't believe that currently we have a very specific merit hours tied to. The specific, I guess, number or percentage of. Goals, I know we we have the ability to uh provide merit hours, but I see like a very specific grid here in this. This form.
It actually, there is a specific grid on the um merit goal. Currently use, yes.
Okay.
Um, he also, excuse me, he also um, as a city manager, you have the ability to to provide. Um, other merit hours, uh, and I don't think they're merit hours, they're actually management leave. Um, hours, which is different than merit hours, the merit hours are tied to the goals and we do have. Uh, a progress grid that kind of mimics. What this looks like, except it's broken into bigger components, you know, there's. Like one goal or two goals or three goals where you have a range of achievement. Of the number of goals to reach a certain number of hours on the larger numbers.
Okay, we just have to see that, that's fine, that's fine, I just thought this was a new addition and was curious as to. Why that. Really breaking it into specific.
Yeah.
Was being added, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so what it is now is we have the three goals and then those percentages that we fill out. That moves into where this section here that Noreen fills out. Off of those percentages that we fill to give them the.
Yeah, I know we do the percentages, but I've never seen a percentage equals a certain number of hours. That's that's new to us, okay.
Any other questions? So before us is a potential to approve the proposed resolution adopting the new city manager merit goals form. As presented, which is. Attachment one, new city manager merit goals form based on summit action items. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to uh. Prove the proposed resolution, Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I. I find it very admirable that Reagan took it on his own board to hold him. I I shouldn't be surprised. Hold himself and us too, we need to track everything as well, so it holds us to a higher standard of accountability um to hold. You accountable and you're holding yourself and your team accountable and it's a more comprehensive approach, I think, for that merit, rather than just picking a couple that we have to sit there and. Usually have to take half an hour to figure out which three we want, and it's like, well, it's all important, right, so uh appreciate the initiative to do that and. Again, I don't know that's really probably gonna. Change a whole lot, but it's great to to be looking at that on a regular basis for the year end.
Thank you, Beth. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. I like the format, I um agree that since. Uh, Reagan will already be tracking all of his goals, this is a good format to use, it makes it easy for us to do. Um, looks like we're gonna do a mid-year in July, so we'll know in July. How things are tracking, although I know you give us more frequent updates than that. Um, and it should just make it all easier at the end of the year.
Jennifer, thank you.
Um, I think it will be helpful because it'll give Reagan feedback on our perception of your completion of all. Summit action items versus just those three, so I understand from a leader perspective. How this is actually a lot more helpful for you um to. To not just guess that we're satisfied, but to to pin us down, so thank you for uh soliciting. Um, this for us.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? I just thank you, Noreen Reagan, for bringing this, I know we've had this discussion over a year ago. About looking at how to change this. Um, because I know that during um session, executive session, when we're discussing this. Uh, it is uh. A lengthy discussion on how those three goals that we've done, not only here when we decide on the goals, but then during executive session, seeing how that. I feel that even though there's, we're gonna judge everything on the summit. It's. More accurate to what's happening. And it's a better accuracy on. How you're doing and helps make sure that uh. Things are getting done right. So, thank you. Noreen.
Oh, I just wanted to point out that once the summit action items are accepted by the council following the uh meeting. That they will automatically become his merit goals, you won't see them again until it's time to grade them, so.
Oh, sweet, so it's kept as a surprise. All right.
What what she means is you won't have to improve them because you improve them by improving the summit action.
I know, I was just trying to. All right. Um, is there any further comment? It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed resolution adopting a new city manager merit goals form as presented, all those in favor state aye. Aye, any opposed? The motion passes, Noreen Reagan, thanks very much for developing this and bringing it back to us, I I really think this is a very good step forward. That concludes our new business, uh, looking at future agenda items, uh, we do have a uh budget, or not budget. A summit on the twenty fifth and then our next council meeting is on the twenty eighth. And um. So, does council have anything that they'd like to see on a future agenda later this year? All right, let's move into council staff comments. Adam.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just I wanted to give you a quick report on uh our crime. Statistics which came in, they're not final because stuff still kind of slowly filters in, our crime was down uh this last year, three percent. Compared to twenty twenty three and twenty twenty three, it was down eleven percent from the year prior, so we have seen a nice drop in crime. Uh, our officers are making arrests uh at over pre-COVID levels. Uh, it was up sixteen percent this year, uh, so they're doing uh some great work out there. And lastly, our calls from service are down eight percent, they were also down about that much last year, so. Uh, we've kind of seen some some changes, some good, uh, some that we don't have a lot of control over, but uh. In a lot of ways, we've we've got a lot of good work that's being done uh by our officers. And lastly, for Reagan Bowl Day, I just want to say, uh, he's, I constantly here at the sheriff's office and I'm very lucky to work for him and. I would second that, so uh, thank you, Reagan, it's, you've made this a great place to work, and that's it.
Thanks, Adam. Uh, Ethan, you on? Nope, okay, Dawn.
Uh, nothing else tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Uh, Selena.
Good evening, council and mayor, I just want to wish you happy new year and nothing else from me, thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Casey.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, um, I just wanted to mention that we've started to receive some of our uh B and O tax returns coming in. I've brought in enough revenue so far to cover my postage, so I'm pretty excited about that. Um, but hopefully I'll have more updates for you um in the near future. And then also just a side note that our our position that we did hire for unfortunately, a week later called and declined the position, so we are. Back to the drawing boards, but uh we are all rallying in our department and answering voicemails and. Emails and we're getting through it, so I'll keep you guys posted as the revenues come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Mark.
There's no executive session this evening and I have no additional report, thank you.
Great, thanks, Mark. Skip, Noreen, do you have anything tonight, Noreen?
I have nothing except to say it's been a real pleasure working with Reagan for the last ten years and I can say that employee morale just keeps improving and improving. Thank you.
Thanks, Noreen.
Why are we seeing you slip a twenty here?
Reagan.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Council and everyone, uh, it's really an overwhelming evening, so I appreciate that the proclamation is incredibly thoughtful and. And it just means a lot, so and and this is the coolest card, I don't know if everyone has seen, I guess you have to. Coolest card ever, um, my water drinking game is leveling up with this, uh, I'm gonna be drinking a lot more water, so thank you. I I love you all and and appreciate it deeply, so thank you.
Thanks, Reagan. Krista.
I just want to congratulate Reagan on ten years, it's a pleasure working very closely with him and and council as well, so thank you for helping to make this. A fun surprise for Reagan because he deserves it. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Christina.
Well, today was a nice kickoff to the new year, I wish we could have council meetings like that all the time. Um, but uh. This Friday, we will be meeting for skip and uh we also canceled our December meeting, so. Looking forward to seeing where we've moved there and what the plans are and Reagan, um, happy Reagan Bowl Day. I've, I've had the honor of being here for half of your term. I know, it's been five years and. I mean, you've really built. I I like that you talked about the foundation, the truly a foundation that can be built on and. All the staff and. The council and how how the partnership that we've built really speaks to that, to your morale. Um, to your convictions, to your. How brave you are. I cannot imagine another man in your shoes, or woman. But um, thank you for ten years here and for not moving out of state and taking a terrible, terrible bribe somewhere else. So, just here's to at least ten more and. Uh, and that's why we need you drinking your water, please put electrolytes in that. Can you read the rest?
I'll read the rest, so chaos coordinator, someone who solves problems you never knew existed in ways that will blow your mind, see also ninja, rock star. And legend. So, pretty cool.
Very nice.
Definitely use those synonyms.
This will, I will carry this around the office.
Got to take it to uh your city manager meeting.
Anyhow, thank you, and I'm glad to be back and to see all of you.
Thanks, Christina, Beth.
Happy Reagan Bowl Day, uh, I was, it was. My heart kind of sank a little bit when we were at the A W C uh district meeting uh in Maple Valley on Friday and um. Current Mayor Blake Diamond said, oh, we're looking for a new city manager, and I'm like, oh, no, no, no. But he's uh, she actually mentioned that Reagan is going to help their them interview uh their new city managers. Thank God. So, we're safe. Um, but uh, yeah, just looking forward to. The legislative session to see what pops up from that and figure out how that's gonna incorporate into our our plans and how we can, how we can make things happen moving forward. Yeah, that's about it, I'm kind of getting a little overwhelmed thinking about that right now, so that's that.
Thank you, Beth. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, congratulations, Reagan, it's a pleasure to work with you. Uh, I've got a couple of things, Beth mentioned the A W C meeting on Friday of last week. Uh, I had the opportunity to present on Covington's upcoming legislative priorities. Um, there shouldn't be a surprise, you know, focus on safety. Traffic and transportation and and open spaces, uh, but we also got to talk about in here what other communities in the. Are we on the thirteenth or fourteen, thirteen?
A W C.
Thirteenth District were concerned about in kind of a bell curve, you know, they they tend to fall within those. But there were some outliers on um others related to um. People having some anxiety about the upcoming change in the administration, um. Some concerns about uh change in the governor as well and uh. Twelve billion dollar budget deficit they're gonna have to deal with, so. Uh, it's good to know A W C is. Already has their marching orders from their cities about, you know, what they need to look at and be advocating for, so it's gonna be a fascinating legislative session. Uh, the next day, Saturday, I was invited to a uh Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. Charity event, uh, they played a hockey game down at uh Showware against uh with the. Uh, firefighters against the police department and they raised money for two foundations, the Puget Sound Firefighters Foundation. And then Behind the Badge Foundation. Uh, I guess it was very successful, uh, I want to say they raised. Uh, upwards of six to nine thousand dollars, it was one of those, I can't remember off the top of my head, but very successful, um. And then we got to watch the hockey game after that, it was thunderbirds, so, yeah, did you go?
We were gonna go and.
Yeah, so it was really a lot of fun, um. Uh, and then finally, uh, Chief Tyrman was going to mention it, but um. I think you all saw that uh Puget Sound RFA was approached by uh Cal Fire uh. Uh, assisting in the fires down, by fighting the fires down in. Los Angeles and uh Puget Sound Fire has sent two vehicles with seven firefighters uh down there, one is a. Uh, engine with the others, one of the new brush trucks that we have that is built and designed specifically for these urban wildland interface fires. So I think it'll be, and it's brand new, so um, what's that, they drive them down, yeah, so um. Very proud of our firefighter stepping up to do that, um, the the uh, the ask for the state of Washington was two hundred. Fireages is what they were looking for, I, I don't know how many they got, but you know, our little department said two, and I know a whole bunch of other departments around here. Uh, well, we can talk, you can fight wildland fires without water, yeah. Yeah, so anyway, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah. Debbie.
Thank you, happy new year to everyone and Reagan, congratulations on ten years. You know, when I I first got involved with the city and and started talking to some of the staff and hearing how many years people have been here. It's, the culture is phenomenal, but the culture is largely because of you. You make it fun to be here, you're inspiring, um, I admire you, um, we are very blessed to have you. In your role, so. Um, when I signed my, the card, I said on ten years plus plus plus, I was gonna put ten times ten, but okay, maybe not that long. Um. And I don't really have anything, it it's actually fun to be back, and it was a nice break, but it's fun to be back um with colleagues and. And kind of looking at what we need to do for the city, so. Thank you and congratulations again.
Thanks, Debbie. Jennifer.
Happy Reagan Bowl Day. Um, yeah, congratulations, and I I guess I should say congratulations to us that we're so fortunate to have Reagan as our city manager. I. I should say, not only, but pretty much, I mean, the only reason I'm here is because of the positive culture that is, that is the city. And I know I've mentioned this before, you know, my kids have worked for the city and um. When Margaret approached me all those years ago to to be on Arts Commission and stuff, I was so hesitant because of my experience with. Another level of. Municipality organization. Um, and 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 investing my my time and passion and and not getting that that, I guess. Reciprocation of fulfillment and um. Every interaction my family has had, every interaction I had once I started getting involved in a a more. Um, service uh role has has. Been truly rewarding and it's because what has been built here, like you said, goodness attracts goodness, it it really does. Positive energy, just like negative energy, is contagious and it snowballs and it becomes bigger and bigger and. People just get a little taste of it and they want more, right, so thank you for for bringing that to us, so congratulations, everybody. We've been in a great city, like, not just great. Also, to to Casey's point, I am getting some feedback on B and O tax, people are realizing they need to send the city some money. Um, the money that I give the orthodontist apparently is is uh getting turned into B and O tax money, so that's great. And um, I did see today, speaking of um. The the fires in Southern California that Reagan Dunn put forward a proposal for King County support. Um, which honestly was kind of surprising to me that our. Big county, but here in this other state is is reaching out, um. Even when there's some weird news coming from the federal level that King County is like, hey, you know, this needs to be done for our. Our um, our fellow humans, so um, I I really appreciated that and, you know, well done to to Reagan Dunn. And the the rest of King County, so I know we don't always give them kudos, um, but that this, I think, is definitely something to be. That's it.
Thank you, Jennifer, Joe.
So the couple of things, uh I have RTC tomorrow where at about two forty tomorrow afternoon, my term as chair of the SCA caucus should come to an end. The weird things have happened in the past, so I don't know. I was told that no can, no one has said they want to be chair. Uh, so we'll find out for sure tomorrow, but I'm not saying I won't be chair again. I'm saying I probably won't be, but I will still be on RTC. Uh, still advocating for instead of uh fifteen to twenty-five years from now that we get extra services that five to ten years sounds way better than ten to fifteen. So I'll be still advocating for that. But two thirty tomorrow, we, I should be chairing my last caucus meeting. We had PIC last week and it was unanimous, we approved the SCA, or PIC did, and, and should have gone to the board. The uh SCA legislative agenda and there was really no changes we made, which is a lot of clarification because we had asked for some extra things to be put in, in there for clarifying language. And so just a lot of questions, making sure that the clarification was what we had originally thought. Uh, other than that, we also had the uh our orientation for PIC, so uh it is amazing to know the toll of march from Isaguas been there for what feels like a thousand years, but it's really uh about eighteen, nineteen years that he's been on PIC. Uh, and uh I am still the vice chair of PIC for at least one more year and see what next year holds. Uh, chief, congratulations. I am looking forward to meeting the little guy in person one day. Hopefully you bring him here. Uh, and then Reagan. I still have the sheet of notes I took during your interview. I see it every once in a while when I go to clean my closet out and I take things out of there and I put, and I put it back and I put the notebook back in there. The one thing that I always remember from that interview well, two things. One, your energy level, which has not changed. You have stayed consistently there for ten years. How you do it, I don't know, but if we can bottle it and sell it, we might be able to reduce the B and O task.
I've already told you, it's green smoothies.
Well, if you start bottling it and selling it, we might be able to make a profit.
Some of your DNA.
But the other thing that stood out to me is in your interview, it was never uh this is what I want to do, this is how I'll change it. This, this is what we can do. This is what we should do. It has always been we. And I've always appreciated that. It's never about you, it's about we. And for ten years, it has always been that. And I will, I'm hoping for another twenty-five years of that. I say that because I don't want you to ever leave this area. We are going to keep you here. Uh but I thank you so much for the ten years of dedication you put to the city and I'm looking forward to what you accomplish next.
I just, can I just say thank you? And, and I, I think to, to all of you, um I, I think, Joe, you may have seconded the motion to hire me.
I don't remember.
I'm pretty sure it was Mark and then you, so if I, if I remember right. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
First off, the metro presentation was very good, so thank you especially to Joe and Debbie. Were you constantly, Debbie? Yeah, pushing to get a route out here. And three zero six two, even though hopefully it comes sooner than what they do. And to everybody who keeps talking to King County Metro that we need a second route out here. I don't like the way it's designed going all the way out to Maple Valley. It needs to go to Lake Point first, so, but you know, that can change. Um, I testified in front of the Senate Transportation Committee to keep funding for Highway eighteen because in Governor Inslee's budget, he's cutting everything. Well, not everything, most things. And then I'll testify tomorrow in front of the Legislative Transportation Committee on um keeping the funds for Highway eighteen. I'm speaking next week um at Crestwood, two weeks at Crestwood, uh to third graders. I've never presented um as a mayor to third graders. I've spoken to from preschool on up about many different topics, but so this will be, I'm looking forward to that. And I have my bag of goodies to hand out. So thank you, Krista. Had a very good meeting with the South King County mayors today. Uh, and one of the ideas that was brought up is one that Sean brought up during the A W C district meeting about having fire chiefs, our fire chief and several others get together to talk about what King County is doing to help prevent what's going on in California. And I think that would be a great SCA dinner arrangement. And so that was brought up. Several topics were brought up that several legislators are going to bring up. So if the one does move forward, um they're trying to circumvent the Supreme Court decision on homelessness and have them ability to sue the cities. And so we will make sure that everybody's kept abreast of that so we can testify. I plan on, I've already let Emily know, our lobbyist, that I plan on being down in Olympia at least six or seven times this year for various different topics. And um Madison is going to go down with me to testify on several things. Feel sorry for Olympia. Uh, she's very good at what she does. So actually, I don't feel sorry for Olympia. I, she's going to do a very good job. But Alyssa and Madison, Natalie are gonna go with me on in February to testify. So um, but I'll, I'm going down there. I'll let each of you know in case um you want to join us. Join me when I'm down there meeting with representatives and senators and not just with the forty-seventh district, but with others. And with the new, the uh Senator of the thirty-third district, I don't know if you've heard, but Tina Orwell is now the new senator for the thirty-third district since um Karen Peiser retired. So I'm so pleased with that decision by King County. And they haven't decided on fifth district, King County fifth district yet, who's going to replace um Dave Updegrove, but that was a discussion today also. And uh Reagan, it is truly an honor to work with you. And uh like with Joe during the interview process and um I think we had a fight during our executive session and who was gonna make the motion and make the second. So.
I think, I, I think we could say that Jim Scott was the one leading the fight.
Yeah, probably. But um, but no, it was it was very, very, it was unanimous and um, yeah, it I just appreciate that you and Aaron took the time to fly out from Utah to interview for this position. And the entire interview process that Noreen and Sharon set up with the dinners to sit down, we changed tables to meet with everybody to talk and ask and then to have the interviews. That was an excellent process and the way you walked in with a plan of what you think, like Joe said, what we should do to keep Covington moving forward. Not what was wrong, but what we should move forward and build on. I use that example in the school district and everywhere else I go that that's what they need to do if they want to start making things happen in a positive. So thank you for choosing Covington. You do an awesome job and it is such an honor to work with you. So thank you. Noreen.
If you remember, we had a very nice spread from Paolo's uh Restaurante.
Yes.
And Reagan, when he was sitting at my table, he wouldn't eat a bite. And I asked him, I said, can I get you something? He goes, no, I don't want to eat. I don't want to get any spots on my white shirt.
I'm surprised he didn't go, I'm fasting.
All right. Thank you all. Um, next is the second opportunity for public comment. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident, comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Anybody online wishing to address council, please raise their hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand or approach the podium, we do not have an executive session. This meeting is adjourned at nine seventeen.